We will call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand in its own quiet voice in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There aren't any additions or amendments through the agenda, so I would look for a motion to approve as shown.
I'll make a motion. You'll pick your agenda, Sean.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Schedule presenters. Jeff Sealy is with us from Millers and going to talk about our refunding of the 2008 refunding bond. Jeff, if you will.
Yes, thank you for having me. It's very nice to be here. Appreciate it, and I come bearing good news. So, we, last year, or earlier this year I should say, we refunded one of the series of bonds that we've been looking at for quite some time, and now we're refunding the second series, the 2008A. And we've been talking about it for a while, and looking back at some of my notes, it goes back to 2016 where we were looking at about $460,000 savings, and then the rates went up a little bit in November of 16 and March of 17, it was around $350,000. Well, we took the bids this morning, and you have a resolution awarding the sale. And just cutting to the chase, if you look at page eight, we ended up with about $697,000 worth of savings. So the weighting paid off quite a bit. We were able to, of course, get it below the 10 million bank qualifications that were before we could, so that probably gave you about four tenths of a percent better rate. The one thing to notice about the savings, because we had to get these bank qualified, we weren't able to do uniform savings. If you look at the years, the far right column, in 2020, you can see, or 2019, it's only about $4,000 savings, then it goes up to about $42,000. That's a little higher because your existing net was a little higher, so we wanted to shave that off a little bit. Then it drops, and then it goes up to more of a steady savings around $90,000. The reason for that is because we sold those other bonds in 2016, and together they were put over 10 million. We had to, these did not qualify on its own as bank qualified, we had to demon bank qualify, which is a whole set of new rules, which I won't get into. But we had to do some restructuring, and so your savings weren't, they were lower in the early years than higher in later years. But the bottom line is, it's over 8% of present value savings. So, kind of going back to the front, you did get six bids. Northland Securities of Minneapolis, Minnesota, that's on page three, was the best bid. They gave you a huge premium. Now, the premium is, is they give you extra money, more money than what you need, in order to refund these bonds, but in return, they charge a higher interest rate. What that does then is, as an investor, if I was buying these, I'd get a higher interest rate of return, but I'm paying a different price. I'm paying more than par value or face value for it. So that extra that they collect by selling these, they give to you. So they actually gave you a premium of $611,000. Well, what that means, if you go back to page three, you can see the interest rate ranges 3% on some years, 4% on the others, but when we take that money that you got in the premium and apply it, the actual re-offering yield is your actual true interest cost. It's just that you're getting a bunch of money upfront, and then we reduce the par amount of the bonds. So we sold fewer bonds, used the premium for that. So your true interest rate was 1.97. So it worked out very well. Other things to note in here, I mentioned the premium. You can see on page six, that is your existing debt. You had coupons or interest rates of 3.5% to 4% on that. That compares, you're going to have 3% to 4% on the new, but you got the $600 and some thousand dollars upfront, so when we build that all in, your savings end up being just shy of $700,000. And annually, once we get out a couple of years, it'll be about $90,000 a year to the taxpayers. So there's also, for your reading enjoyment, the Moody's Rating Report attached to your back, so if you want to see how Moody's rated you, you get a very strong rating, very healthy finances and so forth. So compliments to you on that. Any questions?
Were you surprised at the number of bids?
Not really, because we've been getting quite a few bids on municipal bonds right now. The market is still strong, especially with the premium. If you wouldn't have got the premium, you would have had fewer people bidding on it. But that strengthens the market for the investors, because they get a better rate of return. And we were talking about this before the meeting. There's still quite a market for very safe investments, and most of these will go to mutual funds and insurance companies. And, you know, a number of years ago, a lot of them lost a lot of money, some went out of business because of the crash. So they, they're still investing quite a bit in the safer bond option, as both stock options.
Jeff, this was a one-time deal, right?
It's a one-time deal, yep.
No more refunding.
That could be worth it.
No.
No, no. So last time, I don't remember the exact number, but Josh and I were talking, it was over $600,000. So this is about 1.3-plus million this year alone that you're saving the taxpayers, because this is, goes back to the taxpayers. This is not money that's available to spend in other meetings.
Would you just talk a little bit about the Moody's rating that you discussed in our, in our positive rating?
Yep, you have an A, there's two ratings on this. One is for the district itself, that's an A1 rating, and one is for the state credit enhancement program, which is a AA2 rating. Now, the state credit enhancement program, that's where the state will step in if there's a default and make the payments, for so withhold your A and recover the money somehow, but they will step in, and that makes your bonds more marketable, and it drives down the interest rate. You have an A1 rating also, which is a very strong investment-grade rating. Of course, AAA is the best, and there's only a few schools in the state, and those are usually, they're the Wayzettas and so forth. They're around, they're wealthy suburban areas with a lot of business and commercial industrial values around the cities. But of course, you're benefiting to some degree with your proximity to Twin Cities, and Rochester both have very strong economies. You're far enough away that you don't get a lot of benefit, but you get some with that. You have above-average resident income indices, which then, of course, program mechanics there are strengths, that has to do with the state of Minnesota credit enhancement. So they've identified a number of strengths there. The challenges, normally narrow operating reserves, so you've, that's addressing your budget annually each year, whether you're balancing it, or you're in the red or in the black a little bit. So you have some narrow operating reserves. You have a little above-average debt burden right now, but with so many schools going out for bond elections, I'm not sure if you're going to be above average in that for a while, for a long time. And then, of course, there's a comment on the state credit enhancement program. So they go through a number of factors. You only control certain factors. Much of your rating depends on your proximity to an economic center. You're far enough away that you don't get a great benefit, but you're close enough and kind of in between Rochester that you get some.
I noticed when they did the call with Josh and I, you were a part of that as well, they ask a lot about economic development. They ask a lot about, you know, what your chamber is doing and things like that. I was actually surprised this time, it seemed like it was even more questions on that, and, you know, how many building permits are going on in your town and those types of things. So I noticed that this time, that it was a lot more about the economy of your own town.
Right.
Which we don't have a ton of control over, but Ben was very inquisitive on what's going on there, so.
Right, right. And Josh and Beth did a great job on the rating call. They had information from the city on those types of economic developments. They, of course, want to know about your enrollments, because that drives revenues, your budgets, your capital plans in the future. Those are the types of things they want to take a look at. And then, of course, there's all sorts of statistical measurements that they have, that they have this chart in here on that.
Any questions for Jeff? So what is our, you mentioned it's a resolution, I didn't see any resolution information here.
Do we have the resolution? It is not on our packet. We can do, we can do that though.
Jeff?
We got a resolution here. I copy of it.
Thank you.
And the bold on top, what we, what's read into the record.
Okay, we, we look for a motion.
I just want a question, Jeff, just on page 10 at the very bottom, recent developments. Can you just expand on that just a little bit about what it says since our last report? Just talking about the available figures, even though the audit hasn't come in, what are we saying here reflects a balanced operation with a modest surplus of 58, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's basically saying that even though your audit isn't finished, the unaudited results were in, and it was reflecting that you did have a budget that was balanced, a surplus of about 58,000, which in, you know, in the overall scheme of your overall budget is a balanced budget. It's not a huge surplus, it's very modest. So they looked at the unaudited, even though your audit isn't done yet.
Okay, alright.
Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the 2008 refunding bond sale.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt. Seconded by Rob. Other discussion.
Do we have to go back and redo the agenda?
No, we can make it a resolution. That's fine.
Brenda, would you read?
Do I have to vote on the motion?
You read the resolution and you vote on it.
Don't have to vote on the motion.
We're going to make a motion.
We already made a motion.
We checked it, now we get. Well, we read the roll call.
Okay then.
Yep.
Resolution, awarding the sale, determining the form and details, authorizing the execution, delivery and registration, and providing for the payment of general obligations for billing refunding bonds, Series 2017B. Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Brenda? Yes. Katie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a 6-0 vote.
Alright, and as usual, I need the proposed, signed proposal back, and I left a packet of other signatures you can take care of after I made it. So this is the proposal form, if you want to sign and title it there. And Brenda, you're clerk, right, so you'll have to write it too.
Is this a copy?
Yeah, you can have it. You should be, you should save on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Please. Okay, our second scheduled presenter is Amy Bockdombek, who's going to give us an update on our 1-1. Amy, Nate?
How y'all doing? This is what Kurt had requested last time, so this is great timing. We plan on doing it anyways. Actually, it is good timing, because the tech committee is meeting on Thursday, and this is basically what we're going to be talking about. This is going to be kind of the, kind of the framework for what we're going to, what we're going to do. So I have a presentation or whatever, Beth is going to, is going to help me out and kind of be my van-a-ride advancer kind of person, so. Oh, you can't see. I'm like, I am. Tech, yeah.
Nice presentation.
Yes, isn't this wonderful?
Talking last night, this one, did you?
Talking possibly.
Yeah, it's going to get cold in the wings now.
We're good. So basically, kind of just what I'm going to talk about is a little bit of like where we've been in the past, kind of where we are at now, and kind of where we're going to talk about where we're going to go in the future. So our current setup situation, we have over 1,400 issued or managed devices in the district right now, and that's actually down from last year, because we have gotten rid of our labs. We're down to smaller labs, or we call them STEAM labs, science, technology, engineering, ag slash arts or math. We have smaller labs up here at the high school, and got rid of many of those big computer labs. At the elementary school, we're down to one lab where students can come in and test, and another lab where they can come in and use Chromebooks and learn how to use the device that they're going to be using up here in their media studies class. So primarily, though, the device at the elementary is iPads and iPad minis. iPad minis aren't going to be no longer a device that just we're going to have access to, that's actually a device that's going to be going away. They're not making them any longer, and so we're actually being nudged into doing the iPad, and that is okay, that's good. We can test on iPads, where you can't test on iPad minis. So we've already had FastBridge testing, which is our new way to test for reading and math, that's been going on in the classroom at the elementary school, so that's kind of a nice thing. Six through 10, we have Chromebooks. Six, seven and eight, we're issued a brand-new Dell Chromebook this year. That's actually going to be their device for the next three years. And pretty much, we're doing that because we want them to have some sense of responsibility to take care of it. We have a fleet of Lenovo Chromebooks, we're using in ninth and 10th grade. 11 and 12 have a Windows device, but we'll probably be moving towards Chromebooks in the future. I mentioned the access points, and I'll talk about that here just in a second. With our wiring project, we manage those. We actually can tell what's working, what's not. We had a little bit of an issue here in a couple of classrooms at the beginning of the year, with, they were brand-new access points, so we had to troubleshoot that. So staff use both systemic and content-based programs. And systemic programs like Infinite Campus, Schoology, these bigger systems programs that we have. Campus is a student management device to manage our data that we report to the state. Schoology is a learning management device, that's actually intended to organize the content, the information, the learning that goes on in the classroom. We have a lot of, some paid programs, but a lot of apps and online resources that we're using that are free. We have very good, very frugal, efficient teachers who went through some lean years there, and they figured out how to find resources for free, for cheap, so, yep. And staff devices, K through 5 currently has a MacBook Pro laptop and an iPad. That's currently under lease, that lease was up last year. We actually bought those out for a buck, that's part of our lease agreement, and we're trying to get that to stretch as long as we can before we have to replace them again. We have little-to-no issues, problems with them. The 6 through 12 Lenovo ThinkPad, that's a new this year for the high school, and that is under lease. We are switching over to TVs, much like in the boardroom here. We're trying to move in the direction of having televisions, this is actually what's going on in a lot of classrooms around the country. This is kind of the new projection, we're moving away from smart boards and projectors. We will be looking at some type of touchscreen replacement device, but not quite sure what that is at the time, we're investigating that. And we had the summer wiring project that happened, two vendors were contracted, one did the wiring. It was, actually happened through Earthbend, who submitted a bid for both the wiring and the access points. We actually did this separate, so we could split it out and get the lowest bid on both of them. So Allstate was a subcontractor for Earthbend, they did the wiring. CDWG, our current vendor, did the access points. The total cost of the project was almost $82,000, but we qualified for a 60% rebate. So that means that that project actually is only in the $30,000 range, which is, again, it's really good to save money that way. And we've had little-to-no issues reported with Wi-Fi access, which is an awesome way to start the year, so. This is our current technology goals and strategies. This is what's on the tech plan, if you go off to the district website, go under Technology and look at the plan. These are what our goals, our current goals are, adding student devices till we reach 1-1, faculty becoming more proficient in using those digital age skills, better use of campus, Schoology, Google Docs, the school district using our technology and information resources to basically promote partnership and communication with families and community, improving wireless coverage, improving managed print services, and then online distant learning. So what I actually did was, I actually surveyed the staff. On the next slide, you'll actually see that on the right is actually the staff's response to that. Which ones are relevant? Which ones should we continue? And this is a little dated, because this is prior to the Wi-Fi going live and not really knowing what that was going to be like. So people, you can probably see on the one that gets a little skeptical maybe on wireless, but I put the X on the top because, one of the things about a 1-1 initiative, it's putting the device in every student's hand. We've done that, and I think we've kind of reached that capacity. So I think that is probably a goal we can move away from. We had a lengthy conversation this afternoon with the admin team, and we talked about number, the second one there, about becoming more proficient. That is actually something in both buildings that staff want, to become more proficient in helping students develop their digital skills. We need to do a better job in defining what better use of Infinite Campus, Schoology and Google Docs and apps, even though I can tell you, Google apps and docs and all that stuff, that's something staff want. We have a lot of students using that regularly, so we're going to look more closely into that. On the next slide, it's just a continuation of those goals. I really think the top one is also important, about, you know, continuing our communication and partnership with families, community, using our technology to promote with our social media, with our website, even to having parents share what is going, getting information what's going on in the classroom, that's great. Improving wireless coverage, implementing managed print services, we've done both of those, that's something we can move past. And supporting online and distance learning, we're seeing like an increase in that, in the number of students wanting that, also giving staff alternatives as well. So that's, I think, something that we could look at, so. So we're going to talk about, we'll be shifting from the initiative to now becoming an integral part of the curriculum instruction and assessment practices of what we do. To have the device in everybody's hand, now let's figure out how we can use that to promote voice and choice, and increase engagement, and support and improve achievement for all learners. We want everybody in the district to feel like, it doesn't matter if it's a, if it's an EA working with a sped student, or if it's a teacher, or if it's an admin or student, we want them all to feel like they have options for learning, and technology is the tool to do that, so. And we're going to use models that we already have in place, no worries. We have, we're going to use models that we already are out there, and frameworks that are already out there. A couple of years ago, I came in and we talked about being future-ready, and some things we need in place to do that. So that's a framework that we can talk about, and how do you personalize student learning? Using what's called the SEMER model, where you don't just, where you work to use technology differently, first as a substitute, then you're going to augment your learning tasks, you're going to modify them, and then you're going to redefine them and use technology in a way to do something completely different. Maybe students go from making a book in class where they cut everything out with pen and paper and glue and all that, now we're actually going to have them act out a story. We're going to have them make a flip book, and have them make a, you know, a digital story, and then they're going to publish and even share that with the broader community. And the other one there is the P21 framework, that's the 21st century framework for teaching and learning, so. Again, just, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, there's good frameworks out there and models that we can use. This is another one too, I talked about with the admin team today, about how kind of to evaluate where we're at, and what we're doing. And ISTI is the International Society for Technology Education. They have standards for both students and for educators, and I'm going to work with the staff development committee to try and figure out, how can we provide the professional development that they need in order to bring it out and meet some of those standards for, that ISTI promotes and recommends. So other areas we're looking at, we're going to make some modifications to the website, kind of clean that up a little bit. We'd like to improve family access to programs like Infinite Campus and Schoology, and Mr. Hodges has been promoting that, Jennifer Shippey has been promoting that, by blasting out emails to parents to try and get them to sign on. Supporting anytime, anywhere learning for all learners, getting access as much as possible. And then, next one is improving that communication with family and community. And then the last one is monitoring resources and funding needing for future purchases and current management of our fleet. We want to make sure that we're budgeting our dollars in the most efficient and effective way, but, and look for alternatives when they're appropriate. And they may not always be appropriate, the cheapest may not be the best choice, so. Just kind of thinking about the board's mission, of what we want to provide, all students, all learners, I guess, and thinking about the purpose of technology, the technology committee, we actually talked about this, that technology is a tool and an aid to teaching, learning and information exchange. And it should reinforce the skills needed for 21st century learning work in life. And you all have talked about that, that you would like to see technology used to basically support students, and when they leave this place, we want to make sure that they have the tools, the skills they need to be successful, so. Anyhow, any questions, anybody to ask?
You talked about proficiency with the teachers, Amy, and going forward now, everyone basically has a device.
Yeah.
In general, and I'm not saying everybody really needs to be using them all the time, I think it's a tool, what percentage of teachers do you think are using them the way we want them to use them so we can get this immediate feedback and information?
I think that's going on a lot more than it did last year. I think as we, part of the reason that maybe there's been some hesitancy in the past, and this is truth, are a device that students had a very difficult time being able to do what they needed to do, especially at the high school. And we also too had issues with Wi-Fi, where Wi-Fi would cut out and things like that. We're trying to improve and get those systems of infrastructure to where they need to be. I see more and more people starting to reach, stretch, do things that they hadn't done before. Now, can I say it's a hundred percent, 80%? I can't give you a number. All I know is, when I go in and I look in something like Schoology, and I see that people have courses all set up, and one of the things too, it's difficult kind of to compare apples and apples, because this is two different, whatever fruit. High school's using, you know, our tech tools differently than the elementary is. So for me to be able to go in and look at how often a student is accessing an app or a website on an iPad, a little more difficult to do than if they're accessing and utilizing our Schoology program, which actually I can track data and see student use and staff use and all of that.
Is that where we want to eventually be though? I mean, that's my question, I guess, are we going to be able to use this consistently for every grade and every teacher?
Yeah.
Where that feedback is there because they're usually using 1-1 initiatives the way we would?
Yeah, one of the things we talked about with admin today is, how do we define what proficient is, and effective use? I think we talked about that. And then, what happens then when, what direction do we want staff to go? And a lot of it too can come from admin saying, and I'll give an example, because Mr. Hodges, when we first brought Schoology in, said, hey, we want everybody to have a course, then we want everybody to be live, and then we want everybody to be grading. Okay, that's set bars basically for people to get to. And we've had, at the elementary school, a lot of it has been left in the hands of the staff to kind of figure out or whatever. They've had some tools that we did not have up at the high school, but they're not tools that I can monitor, we can't monitor and regulate and look in and see how often kids are hitting off of that and doing that. My role from here on out, I think, more than anything, I would like to be shifting towards figuring out how to help teachers know when students know, when they are learning, when they're on track, and when they're not, what can, what can we do? We have either tech tools, programs, curriculum do we have to help get in there and help them nudge in a better direction? And I think that really gets into the personalized learning, like, let's really get into what that student knows or doesn't, and know, or maybe they do, maybe they're, maybe they're really excelling in this unit of study. Let's give them some other, some other options that they can utilize, that they can go off on their own and learn in the way that they want to learn, because they've already demonstrated competency, competency, so. I think that's going to be kind of the next phase of this, when you talk about what's the next, where are we going with the technology initiative? It's not an initiative anymore, everybody, kids got a device, every staff member has a device, that's figuring out how to support them, so we can support learning throughout the district, so.
Oh, I just, that slide with the SEMER model, what is there?
Redefine. Redefine. Yep, redefinition.
I was impressed during a conference for the middle school, I think almost every teacher I went into was showing parents how to use Schoology.
Cool.
And I knew how to do it, so I could tell them that I knew how to do it, but I was very impressed, and using these boards too to show, yeah, I was impressed by it, so.
Excellent. One of the things we talked about at the elementary school is scaffolding how we use Schoology. in the way that they use it at the middle school, so.
And I like Schoology, so.
Well, we get a lot of positive, both the principals are really using that email communication blast system through there, and I, that has been a really neat thing to hear parents talking about, that they like getting that, I think you guys do it weekly.
Yeah.
Every grade.
Yeah, monthly.
Yeah, it's the right amount, it's, it's perfect.
You're not getting it?
No, I'm getting it.
I mean, he's looking at me like, well, he's surely like, I'm crazy.
Anything else?
Thanks for your time.
Reports and communication, it isn't our meeting to, uh, to have reports unless someone has anything for the cause that they'd like to throw in?
Is it the first?
Say it again?
Is it our second meeting that we do the reports for?
Unless you have something for us you'd like to throw in?
We just had Weektech last, last week. Um, a couple, you know, um, a couple things we talked about, what I, I think we've talked about it years ago, and I didn't realize we brought it up again this, this week, was out of all the districts in Weektech, we're the only one who's on a seven-hour day, and Mel's on an eight-hour day, and we talked a little bit about it, it's tough to, to line up the schedules when a teacher, I know, is teaching, or someone is abroad and our hours don't match up, but I believe, uh, Airbus has a couple hundred thousand dollar upfront cost to align.
It's at least a hundred and sixty thousand. Um, if you remember, we were eight-hour, and we switched, um, during those really tough years, uh, when we were really struggling, and we had, all those other schools that you're talking about had passed referendums and we haven't, and so when we went to that seven-hour day, it was a cost savings. Uh, so to add that back, now we would need to make that investment, um, and add teachers and time others' teacher shortage too, so.
Yeah, it was, you know, just brought it in the calendar itself, looking at how the calendar's aligning with the other districts and everything.
We've already brought that up, I'm working with the EA again on that, we're trying. Um, you know, our district is very unique, that the teachers kind of drive the calendar, um, it's not, um, the, the district office. We, we give to, they vote on, uh, so we try to line up with GCAD and Weektech as much as we can.
Yeah. That was, that's gonna be the. Okay. Next, public input, does anyone wish to speak to the board about any, any concerns or issues related to the school district? We move on. Consideration to approve the finance report, Josh?
Okay, uh, just a, we've started this time, um, just recently had the auditors in our office for the past week. Um, the in-office portion of the audit is complete, there'll be some follow-up in the next week or so, as you wrap up some loose ends, and then hopefully have the finalized report ready to go at the second meeting in November. Uh, in-office stuff went very well, um, we're gonna hit roughly about where our budget was at, so no big huge surprises in where our general fund will fall out, but again, until it's complete, and we get our draft copy, we'll be able to tell you exactly where it's at, but, uh, it's hitting pretty close where we're at with budget-wise. Uh, so just kind of a brief update on where the audits at. Um, you'll see that the kind of the top left number for revenue is the estimate of, uh, school and state taxes. Um, just got the numbers from Goodyear County and Dakota County, which will hit our bank tomorrow, uh, just slightly above the seven fifty that's there, it's seven sixty-four or five, um, that will come into, uh, for tax, uh, funds. Uh, and then about halfway, a little, two-thirds of the way down, you'll see, uh, two thousand fifteen A, and that's a bond payment, and that's the, uh, long-term facility maintenance upgrades that we had just done. It's a little bit different timing schedule for debt than most of our debt. Most of our debt lines up where we pay at the end of January, beginning of February. Uh, this one has a little bit slightly different schedule, and we pay it at the end of November, beginning of December. Uh, so two hundred and ten thousand dollars, you'll see, that payment won't be the same each year as some of our other debt falls off, that increases, so that we have kind of a steady level of debt as we, we kind of structure things out. Uh, and good note, just kind of piggyback on what Jeff said when he was here, um, the two refundings that we've done in the past year now, uh, will be a significant savings to the taxpayer, nothing that really necessarily will help us in the general fund of the classroom, uh, but as far as tax relief for the general public, a very good thing, uh, roughly about that one and a quarter to one point three million dollars over ten years, it's a pretty significant. So like I said, this is just the cash flow, uh, we got through the end of December, uh, and again, projecting throughout the full year in my office of no anticipation bond, it's a good thing for the district, so. If you have any questions, I can do and rest answer.
I'll make a motion for the primary support.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll try to.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consent agenda, these items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be reenacted under one motion. In the event any board member wants to discuss a particular item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for second, separate action.
I just wanna note the one that's on the screen, um, thanks again to Gemini, uh, for making that final donation, again, to the tennis court repair. Um, it's really been a community fundraising event, and it's been very appreciated by everyone, so just wanna take time to thank them again for that.
I just, oh, go ahead. I was just looking at for, um, month of bills for, looking at for October for the number forty-nine eight seven five, just out of curiosity, where's the dropout detective?
Oh, Mr. Hodges uses that, it's, it's good, yes.
Uh, it's a, it's a add-on to Schoology that.
It works.
Helps me and our intervention team look at students based on their risk of not doing one, not passing classes. Um, it was originally developed as something to help colleges determine a risk of students dropping out of school. Um, but for us, we look at it, it ranks kids based on risk factor. So we can go in, we have an intervention team meeting on Monday mornings at eight o'clock, we go in and look at that and look at kids who are struggling, uh, develop interventions or come up with ideas for interventions that we think will work based on what they're struggling on and push those out to teachers.
Gotcha, okay. And then just one more, forty-nine eight eight five, the, the, um, heart zones, uh, heart zone smart pens?
No, those are actually gonna be reimbursed, um, from the Cannon Falls Ed Foundation. They decided to, um, fund, or to purchase the heart, uh, they wear them, uh, for gym class.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
So that is completely a reimbursement from the Ed Foundation, and thanks to them for making that donation.
Forty-nine nine nine seven.
Sandstrom?
Sandstrom, yep. So that'd be our, uh, monthly fee for the mechanic contract.
How about four-nine-nine-six-two Majeski for twenty-five hundred dollars? Seems like we're still off the date with everything.
Yeah, uh, some plumbing, uh, maintenance and.
That was the showers, wasn't it?
Nope, we haven't had the showers yet, but I think that's, uh, for drinking fountain installation.
Oh.
Just got the one for the shower, we want twenty-seven hundred, that'll be in the next.
That'll be in the next one, okay.
Anything else? If not, I would look for a motion to, the items in the consent agenda. Motion by Kurt. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Kerry. No old business under new business, the consideration approved the seventeen, eighteen winner assistant coaches. Jake?
Yeah. If you have any questions on the list there, a couple spots are still to be determined, we're working on getting those filled. Uh, just a reminder, on like dance team, um, they kind of combine salaries and share. Wrestling is gonna be the same way this year, you'll actually see a donation from the mat rats, they'll help pay for our coach this year too. Um, so, if you have any questions, let me know.
When things are listed to be determined, is it getting more difficult all the time to find coaches?
Um, yeah, I think so, certain sports especially, so, and I know for boys' basketball, girls' basketball, we get some leads, but it's hard to get people to really commit to it, so. And they get the right fit too, so.
And some of these we just posted, you know, were kind of some late resignations too and things like that.
Football's been hard, I mean, football, you've seen that coaching staff get reduced big time, they usually had two coaches at seventh and eighth grade, now you, you can only find one for each level, and, you know, they're splitting salaries, some of those guys, in years past, we can pay like five hundred bucks for a whole season, you know, and, so, a long time to be away from family and everything else for a couple hundred dollars, so.
And when you say volunteer on here, they still go through background checks, they still have to adhere to all staffing things, so just, just understand that even though they're volunteer, they still do follow quite a bit of our regulations.
And we have contractual agreements under Schedule C that at first gets offered to staff.
Yeah.
And that we've been following that.
Look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Jerry on the motion, here a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor of the seventeen, eighteen winner assistant coaches, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration approved the seventeen, eighteen teachers seniority list.
This is a part of the contract that we need to do, I'm sure we post a seniority list. It's always kind of fun to see who makes the front page, I know the teachers get excited if you've made the front page, and Mr. Fogarty still holds the top spot at forty-nine years, um, in, in Cannon Falls, so.
Couple years on the next closest.
Yeah.
Yeah, the gap.
Right, so, um, if you go to the second tab, if you are interested, you can certainly see who our non-tenured teachers are. Um, also, Lori does a nice job of putting them in red if they're on leave, um, so if you notice any of that. If you have any specific questions, we certainly can go through them, otherwise this is just standard procedure to, um, adopt our overall seniority list.
Anytime a person's on leave, does that move them up the seniority ladder, or are they frozen there until they come back?
Their years are recognized as if they're active.
How many years is tenured?
Three. You have to do three consecutive years in Minnesota. If you get tenured somewhere else and come to Cannon Falls, it's one year after you've been tenured in Minnesota. But if you were tenured in Wisconsin or Montana, you need to start all over for the state of Minnesota.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion?
I just wanna add, just so that it's clear, and in the minutes, uh, you will see that the preschool teachers have been added to the seniority list. This is a part of negotiations that's going on right now. Uh, we have a memorandum of understanding to allow them to put them in here, because we don't have a signed teacher agreement as of yet, um, but because we have that memorandum of understanding, that's why you're seeing the preschool teachers' names in this contract.
Okay. Anything else?
There's a large number of teachers to be tenured.
Yeah, the principals have been very busy with evaluations.
Kate, all in favor of approval of the seventeen, eighteen seniority list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Once again, we fulfilled a, an agenda in, in rapid time. Uh, before we close, I just throw something out to the admins, how's your season been so far, how's the year been, anything you'd like to throw out? Things is going good.
I can't believe it's almost November. It's going by really fast.